Get these chairs right.
Any changes to the agenda?
No, should be correct. I do have a new fee schedule when we get to that, so you can just pull that one out. We've got some new updates based on the information we got last week.
So looking to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Lindsay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. We don't have anybody signed up to talk, but thank you guys all for coming. It's kind of warm in here. We get cold when we're in the boardroom, we get hot when we're in this room. So, alright, we will move on to 6.1, the technology report.
Sandy, that's my world. I am going in and out of air-conditioned rooms in here all the time, so that's...
Yeah, I'm sure.
That's real. So, just a real quick update on a couple of different things from an academic, maybe a student perspective. One of the things new this year is we are offering computer science courses at the high schools, specifically computer programming. That was done through a combination, actually a partnership, through Microsoft. So DGF applied for a couple of different applications, one through Microsoft and another one through Amazon. And they provide the curriculum and they provide technical resources. The thing that we need to provide is essentially a DGF employee that will help guide, I don't want to say instruction, have maybe classroom management. But at the moment, we got Andy Cox will be leading that instruction. And we have four volunteers for Microsoft. Two will be from the Fargo campus, they will spend time at the high school, providing the technical guidance. And then we also got programmers out in, I believe, Seattle, who do remote sessions. So they have a roadmap for about three years, so year one, it's a lot of DGF leaning on their technical expertise. Using their curriculum. Year two, it's a 50-50 partnership. And by year three, the agreement was that we have some of our staff that's kind of familiar with the content and we can be more sufficient.
And what grades did you say that is going to be offered?
It'll be for juniors and seniors for sure, and possibly sophores, but I can't remember when I met with Wayne and Katie on what we did as far as the grade requirements. So, we asked the high school, if this was high school students, if this is something that they're interested in. And when they did the Synergy survey on the available courses that we have currently and some possibilities, I think we had over like 20 kids show interest on it right over there. So we had good interest from the students. And we'll try it, and if it works out, great. If it doesn't, that's okay as well. I like this company and this content because they actually got approved curriculum that if we wanted to have credited courses down the road, they already got that. So this is content that's been used in schools all across the nation. So this isn't their first rodeo. So they were very, they had a routine on if we got accepted, what our responsibilities and expectation were and what they could provide. So I was, I'm optimistic about it. I'm actually pretty excited for it. So this is my side of things.
Yeah, so like the volunteers from Microsoft, they would be in the classroom with the students?
Two, if they're local, will be actually onsite. So part of the requirements is we offer this for the first period. And the reasoning for that allows them to take time off work to actually be onsite. And then the other two were, I believe, out of Seattle. And then we just have a remote session. So I think it was Fargo South has used this program. They actually have had kids get internships at Microsoft in Seattle because of the relations they build through this site of course like this. So it'll be a combination of both remote usage and onsite. And the first, computer science one is a fundamentals introductory, you know, on what it is, computer programming. And then the second semester is actually hands-on, doing legit coding, not block coding, that kind of give exposure to elementary students. And if there's interest going on, you know, beyond that, they actually got, you know, as I mentioned before, AP courses and more advanced. But we gotta, we gotta get our feet wet first and see.
It's nice to offer something new.
Yes.
What a great opportunity. Sounds wonderful.
Good, thank you.
From an operation perspective, this summer we've been busy rolling out new switches. That's core infrastructure, that does power and network connections. We were able to use E-rate funds, approximately about 50% reimbursed from federal dollars. That actually sunsetted this year. And just a couple of weeks ago, the FCC put out literature saying that they've had so much positive feedback on getting federal funds used towards infrastructure, like access points and network switches. They are proposing to make this permanent for schools. And while that's not official, it looks promising. And if that does, that is, you're talking savings of hundreds of thousands of dollars. That they realize, DGFs, like a lot of other schools, if you don't have the infrastructure, you don't have, you gotta have the infrastructure in it. So they are looking at subsidizing that based off free use information. So we've been able to utilize that in the past. We've saved probably well over a hundred thousand already. The Summers project was probably closer to 50,000 savings. But I'm actually pretty excited that if that becomes permanent, that is, it's not a one-time expense. That's something we'll be able to utilize every year, so that's good. And then last but not least, we are going to do some, actually two other things, my apologies. Paper cut, it's going to be a solution allowed for staff. So if they want to print something to a device, specifically their copier, they will be able to submit this from their classroom. And then you can retrieve that on any other device. So if a copier is get worked on, which they do, if that copier's not available at that moment, they will be able to go to another device and retrieve that exact same job. So if I wanted to submit something here and I got a meeting in Glendon, I can retrieve that off of Glendon based off of employee key files, username, password, and stuff like that. So it'll save staff some time on abandoned print jobs. But the big push on it is to save money. You want to reduce or lower expenses, we want to, say we can still allow printing, but the cost per job in a copier is .00045, where it's about a penny to a dime depending on the number of people. And then, last but not least, Synergy. We are going to put a hard date for parents this August, August 25th, I believe, August 15th, one of those dates. Essentially asking parents, when they log in, please validate information. We tried that in the spring, as we updated bus routes, medical information. It's, it must be set up a mandate, we just aren't giving updates. Well now we're, we're going to set that hard date with it. But what I also like is, with this update, it'll apply. So I'll use Alyssa for example, if she has a new medical condition this summer, and she's got to take a surgical prescription on it, Tara, I could acknowledge that. But not only will the office staff know about it, we can route medical-related information to our nursing staff. So they will get a notification, Synergy, saying there's been a change with Alyssa Jacobson's medical records. And, you know, kind of a heads up, you need to be aware of that. And if there's forms that need to be signed with Dr. signature, we can include that. At the moment, we can't mandate that form, but at least it's kind of an opportunity for the parents to say, hey, these are, these are some things we need. Same principle of transportation. When a family moves and then their address changed, a notification will get sent to us. The same for Jacobson's, now need a different transportation information versus ask, beg, you know, to get that information. That's all I had. Fast and furious.
Does anybody have any questions?
Just a comment. Jake was definitely on overtime over this weekend. He's had a lot of fun with 702 Communications.
Oh, yeah.
As you may be aware, there's been lots of issues as far as with just our internet and basically our networking. So how much time Saturday? And when he got done helping out over, for local days, then I know he had to turn it around and go back to Glendon. And what time did you guys get done on Saturday?
5:30, whenever I sent out that text, colorful language, and I was kind of bawling a few, and I felt like I want to, but, long story short, the construction in Glendon, they, the roadwork cut multiple fiber connections, so we got it addressed. But it's, yeah, it's been a long meeting.
It's a perfect example of a new learning plan for...
No, all good though. We got it. Got things going in the right direction.
It's appreciated.
Okay.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, we will move on to board committee reports. David?
Yeah, we have a report here. We met with the administrative group and they came forward with some requests. We negotiated with them on their request. We were able to meet most of what they had asked for. It was very reasonable what they had been asking for with regard to pay increases and some of the additional items. And, yeah, I think it went really well. It was a very good, very positive session. Working towards making sure we keep this group of administrators consistent in our, as we go through this phase of having a referendum, we're going to need to make sure that we have a consistent group and not have terminals. I think we were able to negotiate with them and meet those goals and meet their goals as well. So it was good.
So that, yeah, so that's our committee recommendation is in the board packet to the board people.
Yeah, perfect timing tonight because most of the certified committee is here. So when we get done tonight, you can probably look at, see what the next date, get lined up for trying to finish up the language and move forward, so we don't forget.
Anybody have any questions? Questions? No? Any other committee?
We had policy last Monday and not much, the two policies, anybody who wants to jump in can, that we went over was, we had to review it before the second reading, student attendance policy 503. And I'm trying to...
Six.
And 506, right. So 503, we, was that MSBA mostly? I can't remember on that.
Yeah, and really the only, the reason those two that night, and everybody has copies as far as all, everything that was in purple, because that was based on those recommendations coming. So again, if it was MSBA, it was red. If it was coming directly from leadership, then it was in purple.
We had just a few changes as far as attendance to make the definition a little bit more broad on some absences. And then student discipline, admin team went over this policy after the first reading and suggested a few suggestions. We had lots of good conversation. And so anything in purple is something that was changed after the first reading. Now to be approved for the second reading. Did everybody get a chance to go through it and read it? Any questions?
Any other questions?
No.
Good, good.
Right. So any questions, feel free to ask. Otherwise, this will be ready for the student handbook then.
Alright, anyone else?
I have a question. Since some of you are here, how did Saturday go?
There were a lot of people. I was there from 11:30, 12:30, and there were people coming in. I thought there were a lot of people there. I was probably just more busy. But people, not talking about referendum stuff, but there were people going through. I would have been there the rest of the day.
Right. Well, I was there 12:30 to 1:30. And there were people coming in and, you know, I'm like, you know, do you have any questions? And most of them were like, no, we know, you know. They seemed to be pretty informed already. We did come across one gentleman who actually was a neighbor of mine, like, growing up. He, quite a bit older, but he, he's definitely a Dilworth locomotive and he doesn't see why we don't have a high school there. And I said, you know, if we can call it Harilton High, we'll, we'll put your name on that and sticker out there. And so I said, we just don't have the money for that. But other than that, people did seem like they already knew about things and they, you know, that was the only negative. And then, you know, we know that by that piece of pie, that there's going to be, you're not, no matter what you do, you're going to have the know people because this is the way it was and they don't like it changed. And, you know, I said, well, we haven't had a high school in Dilworth for many, many years. But anyway, but it was good. And then Brian had to move because of the Bingo people, really needed the space. And so Bingo was much more...
We got chased out by that. 2:15, they wanted me to, because they had to get the dot and stuff and all that. And I said, I know you're starting at 3:00. I'll have everything out there by 2:40, which we did. And it was, it was fun. It was good.
Thank you. Alright, we will move on to 6.3, the superintendent report.
Just a few things because most are in the action items. Update on enrollment. This is the latest. Really hasn't changed. I think one, one student difference overall. You know, I noticed first grade, and again, some of this is the ones that are leaving. You got those numbers, we see those changes. The ones coming back that may be new, you know, a lot of times, now it's August. That's when we're going to be seeing those. You will see over in the far right column, we show exactly what those limits are on open enrollment. And so you can see which sites are open and which sites are currently closed for open enrollment. So for instance, kindergarten, still openings, a Dilworth Elementary, close of Glendon, Altima open in first grade, one's open in second, and so on and so forth. So that's what we track as we get people putting in requests, enrollment paperwork, and what else not. All the admin, all the admin assistants can go right to this one to see the updates.
Is that new? Because I don't remember seeing that column before.
That's a column, that's new.
I like it.
It's a column we've had, but we've only had the numbers and never the open and closed.
Yeah, I like that.
And I think from, we're just going to have this always because I think it's a lot easier
Yeah, definitely.
for people to be able to track it. So that's our current numbers. Another one that I'm going to give you just because we have to have it also for, this is part of the review and comment process. And so, again, everything to the left of fall of 2019, you're going to see the actual numbers from the last few years. And of course, 2019 is what we're projecting. And everything 2021, 22, 23, and 24, that's just assuming passage and what it could look like. And what we have to be able to do is show the department that there's a need. You know, they're going to ask that from the review and comment process. Are you expecting more? Do you have declining enrollment? What's the story? And you notice that we can have very nice gradual increase, just monitoring the open enrollment. And so I'm trying to be conservative with those numbers. That's why I'm putting in the 140s. And once the project's done, then we go up to 150 in kindergarten. And we've limited that because that's how many classrooms we have. And that way, remember, and I think it's a, we talked about before, we will have a cheat sheet for everybody when we're doing these, these open forums and these meetings with community. When people are talking about, are you building for the future? Well, we are because, again, we're building it for natural residential growth. And a talking point is the fact that people have to remember, we only serve about 100 residential students per grade. So we have a lot of room. It's going to take quite a few years to increase 50 students per grade. That's a lot of houses. So it's setting us up pretty well. So this is one of the reports that has to go in the review and comment process. And I've already told Liam that they're getting this one tomorrow. So, anything jump out at you? Actually, just, right now, we're on track to start moving back up again on enrollment. Hopefully, last fall was the low point, just under 1,600. But I wanted to also put in that note for the state so they understand, okay, well, what happened? You know, starting 2016, that coincided with when we had to start doing some capping. Everything goes through, we'll start trending right back up. We're not limited by, it's not like we're having to go out and recruit. People want to come here. We're just having to have the spots. Questions on enrollment?
Where are most of the open enrollments in Dilworth coming from the Woodbridge area or from all...
We track exactly how many come in those last four sections in Woodbridge. So when you guys look at that, that October 1 enrollment, one that I've shared, if you guys all have access to that, there's a tab that shows Dilworth open enrollment. And so it shows exactly for each of those street areas, how many are coming in each of those. So at least then we know as this boundary adjustment gets done, how many of those will naturally become residential. So we've got that tracked K through 12. And then the rest, we track also, how many are west end of Dilworth? And then how many are two more ahead, and Barnesville, and what else not.
I guess, my question is, do you think until we get the building up and running, that we'll be able to allow all those areas that aren't? And DGF yet coming, or are we going to be capping some of those students?
Well, I think we'll still have to cap because until we, we're still going to have the same issues until we move all the elementary over to Dilworth. You know, as soon as we can start doing that. Because you see on those, those numbers for this fall. You know, you look at that, for instance, look at fourth grade. 93 students, four sections at one site, 31. It's just a terrible number. What do you do with 31 students? You get all those two sections. Where, again, if we had those all combined, and this is one of those fallacies that people just have to understand, when we put all these kids together, it's not going to decrease. This is not a decreasing of staff. This is just getting equity. That same 124 kids, who are the same six sections, it'd be a nice 20 to 1 ratio. I mean, that's, that's going to work well. So the sooner we can get those kids all together, the sooner the equity starts.
So that was one of the questions Friday I had from somebody, you know, their grandkids are all here and are we going to have to not allow them to come to Dilworth, you know, or, which it possibly could be, some of theirs that, the gapping works, right, or, I don't know if it's priority, do you have priority?
And we do have the priority. Anybody that is in that zone of transition, they're automatically priority one. So when you look at that far right column, Ronnie, then that shows exactly what the priority one and priority two limits. So we automatically, in every one of those grades, we leave at least one more student per section available. So kindergarten, if you got five sections, you know, you have five sections over Dilworth, and if you're capping at 18 for priority two, you're still leaving five more spots open for anybody that may be moving into those transition zones in the summer. Or if we have to, if we're hiring new staff, that again is priority one. So if they happen to have kids. So we leave ourselves a little bit of room for some of those summer deals. Now, referendum goes through, we start working on this. The board may have to relook at for that transition year. Do you want to change your caps so that you don't lose some of those kids that want to start a year early into it? You know, before you get them all together. But we'll have to look at that at that time. Lots of planning afterwards. So enrollment, that's the enrollment issue. The only other that I wanted to just talk about briefly before we get into these action items, and then of course you're going to see more from me. Wayne and I were talking today. We are still without, so far, everything on the industrial tech has hit a rap. We thought we had someone that we were trying to do whatever we could to, we actually have someone that lives in our school district, that actually has a master's in agricultural education from NDSU. Not working right now. Those three kids in the system, the last one coming into the system. So we were even trying to talk the person into, would you do half-time? You know, so, so far, Wayne hasn't given enough, you know, taken her out for lunch and all that. But that's, that's right now, only, we do not have any other candidates. So one thing you may be seeing coming from me for the August 12 meeting is our fax person at the high school, again, is a part-time position. We may need to seriously look at putting that to a 1.0 position so we can offer some more in the trades. So we're just going to have to play this by ear. I'm hoping maybe this person will look at second semester once all the kids are in school and feeling a little bit more comfortable that maybe that person would teach some courses second semester. So we're still working on that. Alright, did you, you keep talking. I mean, it would be a great fit, would open up some things for us.
Yeah. No pressure.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I have a quick question about the kindergarten section in Glendon. Is, what is the typical class size?
That's, that's as much as we've gone before, it was 22. So this is...
It seems high.
It is. And this goes back to when I was, back in June or early July was, remember when I brought up about the board still has, can make a determination whether you want to move some of those kids, open enrollment, over to the other site? That's an August decision. Remember, you have six or seven open enrollees at that Glendon site. And you have a policy in place that allows you to decide whether you want to move open enrollment students to the other site. So you could easily stabilize those ratios. It's three of one, two of the other. Because again, I can tell you, and I brought this up before earlier, but you're well aware that a lot of those open enrollees are staff members' kids. So they're all priority one. You don't have priority two that you're going to be able to move to solve that issue. So you're going to go to priority one, but again, it's in your policy. So you either make a decision, do you add a section? Which is sending another message to the public if you're going to add another section when you've got a policy that allows you to equalize it coming into a referendum year. So it's, it's a good discussion for the 12th. Any other questions for me?
Alright, hearing your other questions, we will move on to 7.1, the approval of the July 15 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Raleigh. Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Amy did, I'm sorry. It's kind of hard to hear with the fan. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 8.1, under business, this is under the claims and accounts. And Raleigh, you got that? And also in your board packet is the Glendon Felton Student Activity Bills and the Dilworth Activity Bills. Your Minnesota Liquid Asset Account, the Treasurers Report. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any questions? Hearing notes, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.1, this is the LTM, Ten Year Plan.
So I will give you the short abbreviated version of this. It's a one-pager, unless you want Michael Heisel's other pages with all of the bond payments and all that associated with it, which I don't think you necessarily need or want me to spend that time on it. Bottom line is, this is what we fill out every year. And typically, this is fairly easy to do because whatever amount of money we have coming in on LTFM, we just show as expenditures down at the bottom. You notice, when you look at column 2019, it's showing $725,000 total. And basically, there's two finance code... And basically, there's two finance code areas that you will see where we've got numbers. So at the top in category 1, that's everything that's health and safety. So all the old health and safety codes, that's all category 1. Category 2 is all the indoor air quality stuff. We do not have anything in our 10-year plan for that. We haven't had that, we haven't had to worry about, we don't have abatements right now. Category 3, we don't have any, category 4 we don't, and the big one is category 5. That's all of the true LTFM codes, building envelope, electric, you know, all your electrical plumbing, heating, all those things. Now, that's where the majority of our costs, if you look at up at the top, we will always have in category 1, it's pretty easy to estimate that we'll always have those type of costs. We'll always have the fire marshal coming out, we'll always have inspections, that's all of the health and safety codes. So we basically put that out, 50,000 or so, you can see a gradual, just a little gradual increase each year. Now, down at the bottom is where it gets fun, and that's why we had a lot of meetings last week, and Mike coming up and such. Because the columns for 20 and 21 are all assuming the passage of the bond. That's your $9 million worth of LTFM spending that is directly in this project. So when we submit this to the state, notice, basically 10% of that amount that's being bonded is, will be spent in the first year. 90% will be spent in the second year. That's why you're seeing a 1.2 million spending and an 8 million the second year, to get our totals. And we've talked about this before, we had to show this now into the report. What we're doing is, we are dedicating a major portion of our LTM funds now into the bond payments. So you've got both the regular LTFM, and then a certain portion for IAQ, the indoor air quality. So there's three different bonds in place, in place moving forward. There's an LTFM tenure, there's an LTM IAQ for 20 years, and then we've got our bond for voter approval for 22. So what this is saying is, moving forward, once we get this project done, we're dedicating over 80% of our LTFM funds, so that we are leaving ourselves with only 190-some thousand each year. But it's with the idea that we shouldn't have to fix too many more things, because they should be fixed in the project. We have a new, Dan Omen is working and is going to have us for tomorrow or Wednesday, a new numbers on the roof. So these totals that you're seeing in 22 through 29, these are estimates, folks. We can move those numbers around in those categories, but we can't move around the 190-some thousand, that's what we've got. Okay? Once we're done with the 10 years, then, that LTFM payment of 3-400,000 is done. And so we can actually take that money, because we'll either have it here, showing an extra 3-400,000 in this column at the bottom, or we can use the LTFM funds to pay the IAQ payment if the board in the future wants to decrease the cost to tax schools, because you'll have the money there. So this is the 10-year plan to get submitted, have to submit this on Wednesday. So it's hand in hand with everything we've been working on with all this stuff with the bond for the last two months. Do you have any questions? That's the Cliff Notes version of LTFM.
You guys went through all these one by one, you were the estimates you came up with.
Yep, yep. We've gone through with Lee and Jason, and this was a lot of stuff on Wednesday, just, do we have the LTFM figured out? Are we making sure we've got coverage? Do we have the funds so that we're not going back to the voters later saying, oh, oops, we screwed up and we have to increase our operating levy? We should be in good shape. I don't want a phone call in five years when somebody's saying, you didn't estimate enough, Brian.
Brian, if there was a major need, could you do the same thing, bond for it with the LTFM funds going forward?
Yeah, yes you can. And the best part, Dave, is, is that, remember, we're using our LTFM funds right now during that 10 years to pay some of the IAQ payment down already. We still have that levy of 30, if the worst-case scenario, in the 10 years, a boiler goes out. The board can either choose, do you want to use your unreserved funds to fix it, or do you want to use your IAQ that you have rights to? After the 10 years, assuming these things don't happen, the best, the best thing is, you can under-leve your IAQ payment, you can drop that one down, that is 100% local, no state aid that you're going to lose. So we can under-leve that one and use any portion of the LTFM funds to pay that payment. So the board will have that authority, and again, these numbers are all based on a static amount of student pupils. Remember, when you look at the enrollment projections, this is projecting over 100 more pupil units. Each of those pupil units is going to bring in another $380. So you've got more money that will be coming in. So I feel very comfortable being able to tell when we're talking to the public about, oh, you're going to, we're not going to come back in five years. This is about as transparent as we can be, and we're setting up for a lot of options. And remember, everything right now in the bonds are based on a 50% on the A, and that's going to go up to 70, which is going to drop the taxes again. So we're trying to be very conservative with this. Comfortable with these, these numbers? That's it.
All right. We will move on to 9.2.
And actually, there's a resolution.
Yes. Sorry about that.
Is that 9.1's a resolution?
9.1.
This is a resolution for 9.1. It's a short one.
Okay. Resolution approving annual long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan, whereas a regularly scheduled meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 2164, held at DGF Middle School Media Center, Dilworth, at 6:00 PM July 29, 2019. Whereas pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 123B.595, all public schools are required to annually update their district long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan and submit the board-approved plan to the Minnesota Department of Education. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 2164, Dilworth, Glendon Felton as follows. One, the board hereby approves the revised district long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan. And two, the clerk is authorized and directed to submit a copy of the adopted resolution to the Minnesota Department of Education as soon as reasonably practicable after its adoption, but in no event later than July 31, 2019. A motion for the adoption of the resolution. Okay, so looking for a motion. Ronnie?
Second by.
Second by Lindsay. All those in favor?
Aye. Resolutions.
Yep, you'd have to do the motion first. All those in favor say aye.
Right.
Opposed, same sign. Now we'll do a roll call. Ronnie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Myself, yes? Amy?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And Raleigh? Yes. Let the record show, 7-0. Motion carries. Now we will move on to 9.2. Sorry about that, this is the policies. This is the second reading of all of the policies that are listed. Did anybody have any questions on any of the policies? Okay? So looking for a motion to approve the second reading.
So, oh, go ahead, Raleigh.
Okay, Raleigh Gruehl, second, or motion, and Amy, are you second?
I'm second, yep.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.3, this is the non-certified contract. Tanya Pollak, looking for a motion to approve her contract.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 9.4, this is the non-certified contract for Callie Womack? Womack?
Womack.
Womack? Womack, thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions?
I asked Brian where the ramp is, and said it's too soon, no, where they're going to serve.
This is.
I do know, Tanya Pollak will be at Dilworth Elementary, Kaylee Womack will be at Glendon Felton Elementary, and then Tiffany Geller is going to be at the middle school.
Are you fully staffed?
As of this moment. I mean, that could change tonight, because I got an email, but yeah, as of right now, we're fully staffed for special ed teachers and special ed parent.
Awesome. Good job.
So, no.
Okay, so looking for a motion for Tiffany's contract.
Did we vote on it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We didn't vote on it.
Wow, my head still is not clear. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Now we will move on to 9.5. This is a contract for Tiffany.
So moved.
Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. Do we have any further questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are moving on to 9.6, this is the 1920 fees, and here comes a whole bunch of stuff.
Yep, new copies, so you can just, yep, because these have new highlighted numbers, in particular, from, we met Thursday or Thursday while we were trying to get all of the boards ready and having that fun, we started looking at the fees. Gave all of you, sent out, I think, on the fees as far as the regional.
Yep.
And Brooke had, I'd asked Brooke to get like Thief River Falls, East Grand, and some of those other ones that we compete with. And so what you're seeing, again, these are just, stuff in the yellow is some of the suggestions based on the conversations we had on Thursday with, with the admin, admin team. We had Joe there, we had, everybody was, we were all working on the board, so everybody was putting their two cents in. And you notice, one of the recommendations is on the passes, or on the, as far as activity admission going from 5-3 to 6-4, that's much more in line with what everybody else, the substitute teaching, let's raise that by another five bucks, and we need an hourly amount associated with that. Again, these are just recommendations, you can make whatever changes you see fit. You see the event supervision, that was all part of, also when we went through the negotiation process. And then the big one, of course, is on the fees. So if you think of where those caps were at previously, you had an individual at 60 per season, and that's where the 180 came up, when you had that individual cap of 180. So the recommendation is saying, okay, we, these got to be gradual changes. We had quite a discussion about, you know, referendum year, and, you know, how much do you raise it? But again, we got to separate what is associated with the bonds for buildings compared to what is for operational costs. You know, we're not going to the public about raising our excess operating levy. Everything we're doing in November is about a building, which is a complete different funding piece. And operationally, I think you all know, we're not in the, we're not trying to make the extracurriculars pay for themselves. These increases will never, they'll never pay for themselves. But when you compare the other schools, we've been low.
Yeah, we've been very affordable. And just, you know, we'd mentioned before, for those that weren't on transportation, when we negotiated, we had to increase the activities buses considerably to get the bus, busing providers to get someone in their bus for at least four hours. They're struggling to, to find people that wanted to drive our extracurricular buses because they couldn't guarantee them. You know, no one wants to sit in a bus for what were, I can't remember the dollar amount, but it, it wasn't very good.
It wasn't good.
Yeah.
And so, we said that we would look at, again, at this time of the year, we would look at the fees, increasing those fees to help cover the costs as far as for transportation.
And Joe and I have had, had some conversations about, and he'll bring it back to the Activities Council, which is going to happen again in August.
Everybody's going to get a meeting.
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Because we need to have a discussion about, you know, now we don't have the boosters, you know, we don't have some of these, these entities that can help supplement to offset some of those costs. And we've had some, we've had parameters that have been in place, when we charter, when we don't charter. And we're going to have to look at that again, because we're not going to have these other extracurricular, these other organizations to help, you know, to help those, offset those costs. So the use of charters, it may end up being, we'll use the charters when it's going to be cost, you know, when, when the cost, sometimes sending one charter, especially with football, instead of two buses, actually is cheaper. But we've had these other times where if it's over 75 miles or 100 miles, we do a charter. And it isn't cheaper. So we're going to have to either look at increasing some fees associated with that, or we're going to have to go with less charter times.
Well, and I know students would kill me, and I know my own daughter would kill me, but you know what? Like Roso, I'm going to use Roso for example, how many times they go to state hockey all the time? They have a school bus and they pull their trailer.
Yep, yep.
And it is what it is. Sometimes we pamper our kids a little bit.
Every time a road comes, they do not have a charter.
No.
It's a lovely little trek coming down here.
Yep.
Coming down for the last couple, you know, through the last four years, I think with volleyball, it's been one-hour matches, and so you've got four or five hours driving both ways for one hour.
I mean, it's, it's nice, but it isn't a necessity.
Right.
Well, I'm comfortable with the recommendation of, you know, I understand not wanting to jump the fees super, you know, $20 per activity, you know, just to let the public know, you know, this, we're, we're very low compared to, we're lower than Holly, this is about in line with Barnesville, I don't remember what phrase he was, something like East Grand Forks and Thief River were much higher, but they have hockey.
Yep.
We don't have hockey.
Yep.
So and they're paying for ring times and stuff like that, so.
So when you look at those caps, we basically just said, okay, if it's three sports, so instead, when it was 60 and 180, so it goes to 65, then that's why it's 195. And so on and so forth. Going from 250 to 275 for the family cap, really, 275, if you've got, that's still, when you look at those caps of other places, that's pretty reasonable if, you know, a couple pairs of shoes for basketball.
I think it's like a hundred dollars cheaper even than Holly.
That's what I was looking at, Holly was 375.
Yeah.
So 75 on your high school athletics.
So this, you know, even if just go to these, I think everybody should fully expect that the following year, you're going to probably hit 300. You're going to have to, on those caps, you're going to have to keep increasing that family cap. That's still pretty good for 300 if you've got a... That's still pretty good for three-hundred, if you've got a few kids that are all playing lots of sports.
Brian, there are procedures or processes in place for low-income people?
Yep. And, and we've, we've got that based on the free and reduced, and/or if there's a hardship issue. So, they, they basically approach the principals, who then work with, with Joe and them, and because, you know, it may not, it may be that they don't qualify for the free and reduced, but somebody maybe has lost the job, then you got situations that come up. So, they, they do that very well, and, and, you know, we don't, we don't make public announcements about that.
Your Holly's fees.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, this is, this was by the end, we got, by the end of that day. So, and again, I just, I want you to have a starting point, and if you wanna make changes, but we thought, at the very least, it should go up by these amounts.
I also wanna note, the snack program, we need to add that, going across, we're just keeping it at forty, but we're putting that family cap of a hundred. I know we've been discussing that for about a year.
So, we, so we wanna make sure, you, make sure that you add that, so we get that in the record.
Family cap.
So, the family, snack program.
Right side of them.
Yeah.
We're just gonna add, we're adding a family cap of a hundred.
So, that's a recommendation from wellness.
Wellness committee.
Okay.
I would like us to increase the cost of, you know, right now, we're at sixty for high school and forty for middle school. I would like us to go up to like where Holly is, seventy-five and fifty for our athletics.
So, instead of sixty-five and forty-five?
Mm-hmm.
And, again, that's up to you guys, and what do you want for the caps? If you do that, do you want to make a change on the individual cap and the family cap?
Yes. Two-hundred and three-seventy-five.
Yes, I would think once we could've gone to seventy and two-ten and fifty, and something like that, you know, with a three-hundred family cap, but I'm open to whatever the rest wanna do.
It just comes down to, do you wanna try to, do you wanna try to get it up to Holly's in one year, or do you wanna work through it in two?
Let's do it in two.
Yeah. I think a gradual increase would be best.
I think it's, I think we're better off, especially this year.
And going from, you know, going from two-fifty to three-seventy-five in one may...
It's three, two years.
If you did it even halfway, you could go to three-twenty-five, with the idea, by that time, Holly's probably gonna go to four. So, that second year, you could go to four. Then you're splitting it right in half, if you want three-twenty-five.
I agree, the two, two years give people time to adjust.
I do too.
Okay, so what is the dollar amount, you're saying, the sixty-five, forty-five, or seventy?
Seventy-fifty.
Well, if you, if you went to seventy-five, if you went to seventy-five, then the two-twenty, the seventy-five, either way, it depends by what you wanna make the, the single. If you wanna make the single up to two-twenty-five, then the seventy-five would make, or if you wanna go seventy-two-ten?
Or leave this. Or leave it as this.
Does anyone have a recommendation, other than the dollar amount for doing it for the two years?
We've also gotta get through the vote this fall, so...
Exactly.
I say we leave it as is, and then reevaluate.
Leave it as the...
The recommendations.
Yep.
With the change for the hundred-dollar cap on the snack?
On the snack.
With the hundred-dollar cap on the...
Cap on the snack program. The theory behind that was that if you have three kids in elementary, you're getting the third one for half price for the snack program.
I'll second the motion.
So, Amy, that was, who made the first one?
Ronnie.
Most of the rules is, other than the hundred dollars.
Hundred-dollar, yeah, yeah, you know, but then...
This is yours. Okay.
Ronnie and David.
Ronnie and David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. We will move on to nine point six, this is...
I'm happy.
Nine point seven, the admin contracts. Again, David had said that this was a recommendation from our negotiation team. And so, looking for a motion to approve their contracts as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Any questions?
Yeah, I had had some before, but I caught Brian on Saturday, 'cause not being on a negotiation committee, you don't quite know where you've come from, and where you've been and stuff, you know, and so, I understand why all the changes were there, and what they were doing, so... 'Cause I didn't know what you've done in the past with the certified and everybody else too, so, you know, this seemed to be in line with that, so...
Right, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This is nine point eight, resolution to submit the bond referendum for review and comment.
Amy's gonna love this one.
It's like three pages.
Oh, my gosh. Seriously?
Well, and I think you almost want to make sure you read it, because...
If you need to take a drink, we understand, or pass it down, we could all read a portion, I suppose.
So, what I did is, I went back to the two thousand fifteen resolution. We had our legal counsel help us put that together, basically took the same thing, had to rewrite it based on the description, because the ballot question has to be different. We're not doing a pre-K building and things like that. And I think it's worthwhile, just to make sure we catch, in case there's something that I didn't catch, at least we got this recorded. So, there's two copies of that, and it's a long one.
All right.
Bear with me. Pursuant to due call and notice thereof, a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District twenty-one sixty-four, Dilworth Glenin Felton Public Schools, was held in said school district on July twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, at six P.M. All members were present. Resolution relating to this issuance of school building bonds and calling a special election thereon, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District twenty-one sixty-four, Dilworth Glenin Felton Public Schools, State of Minnesota, as follows. One, the board hereby finds and determines that it is necessary and expedient for the school district to borrow money in an aggregate amount not to exceed thirty-one million, four-hundred-and-thirty-five, four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, and not to exceed any limitation upon the incurring of indebtedness, and which shall be applicable on the date or dates of the issuance of such bonds. To provide funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the construction of new gymnasiums at both school facility sites, costs related to the updating and remodeling of all school facility sites, and costs related to updating and improving safety and security at all school facilities. The question on the borrowing of funds for these purposes shall be, school district ballot question one, on the school district ballot at the special election held to authorize said borrowing. The project will be submitted for review and comment to the Commissioner of Education in accordance with Minnesota Statute, section one-twenty-three B point seven-one. The administration is hereby authorized to take all necessary and appropriate actions in consulting with the Minnesota Department of Education, and taking such other actions as necessary to comply with the provisions of the Minnesota Statute, section one-twenty-three B point seven-one, as amended. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause the commissioner's review and comment to be published in the legal newspaper of the district at least twenty, but not more than sixty days prior to the date of the special election, as specified in paragraph three of this resolution. The question of borrowing of said funds shall be submitted to the qualified voters of the school district at a special election, which is hereby called and directed to be held on Tuesday, the fifth day of November, twenty nineteen, between the hours of seven o'clock a.m. and eight o'clock P.M. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, section two-oh-five A point eleven, the district combined polling places and precincts served by these polling places, as previously established and designated by School Board Resolution for School District Elections, not held on the day of a statewide election, are hereby designated for this special election. The combined?
Now, this part you won't have to read, because you've done a resolution for the three.
Okay.
So, back in December, so you don't have to go through all the townships and all that.
But, there will be polling places at Dilworth, Glenin, and Felton. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause written notice of said special election to be provided to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located, in whole or in part, and to the Commissioner of Education, at least seventy-four days before the date of said special election. The notice shall include the date of said special election, and the title and language for each ballot question to be voted on at said special election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said special election to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least ten days prior, or before the date of said special election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a sample ballot to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least four days before the said, date of said special election, and to cause two sampled ballots to be posted at each polling site on election day. The sample ballot shall not be printed on the same color paper, paper as the official ballot. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said special election to be published in the official newspaper of the school district for two consecutive weeks, with the last publication being at least one week prior before the date of said special election. The notice of the election so posted and published shall state the question to be submitted to the voters, as set forth in the form of the ballot below, and shall include information concerning each established precinct and polling place. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause the rules and instructions for use of the optical scan voting system to be posted in each polling place or combined polling place on election day. The clerk is authorized and directed to acquire and distribute such election materials, may be necessary for proper conduct of this special election, and generally to cooperate with election authorities conducting other elections on that date. The clerk is further authorized and directed to cause, or to cooperate with proper election officers to cause ballots to be prepared for use at said election in substantially the following form, with such changes in form, color, and instructions, as may be necessary to accommodate an optical scan voting system.
Do I have to read the ballot?
The ballot question you wanna read.
Okay. School district ballot question one, approval of school district bond issue. Shall the School Board of Independent School District number twenty-one sixty-four, Dilworth Glenin Felton Public Schools, be authorized to issue its general obligation school building bonds in the amount not to exceed thirty-one million, four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, to provide funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the construction of new gymnasiums at both school facility sites, costs related to the updating and remodeling of all facility sites, and costs related to updating and improving safety and security at all school facilities? By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. Optical scanned ballots must be printed in black ink on white material, except for the marks be read by the automatic tabulating equipment, may be printed in another color ink. The name of this precinct and machine readable identification must be printed on each ballot. Voting instructions must be printed at the top of the ballot on each side that includes ballot information. The instructions must include illustration of the proper mark to be used to indicate a vote. Lines for initials of at least two election judges must be printed on one side of the ballot cards, that judges' initials are visible when the ballots are enclosed in a secrecy sleeve. If the school district will be contracting, contracting to print ballots for this special election, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to prepare instructions to the printer for layout of the ballot. Before a contract in excess of a thousand dollars is awarded for printing ballots, the printer shall, at the request of the election official, furnish, in accordance with Minnesota Statute, section two-oh-four D point oh-four, a sufficient bond, letter of credit, or certified check acceptable to the clerk in amount not less than a thousand dollars, conditioned on printing the ballots in conformity with the Minnesota election law and instructions delivered. The clerk shall set the amount of the bond, letter of credit, or certified check in the amount equal to the value of purchase. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to provide for testing the optical scan voting system within fourteen days prior to the election date. The clerk shall cause notice of the time and place of the test to be given at least two days in advance of publication, once an official newspaper, by posting notice and by notifying the county or legislative district chair of each major political party. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of the location of counting center, or the places where ballots will be counted, to be published in the official newspaper at least once during the week, preceding the week of the election, and in the newspaper of widest circulation once on the day of preceding the election, or once the week preceding the election, if the newspaper is a weekly. As required by Minnesota Statute, section two-oh-three B point one-twenty-one, the board hereby establishes a ballot board to process, accept, and reject absentee ballots at the school district elections not held in conjunction with the state primary or state general election, or that are not conducted by municipality on behalf of the school district, and generally to carry out the duties of the ballot board, as provided by Minnesota Statute, section two-oh-three B point one-twenty-seven, and other applicable laws. The ballot board must consist of sufficient number of election judges trained in the handling of absentee ballots. The ballot board must include any county auditors, city clerks, and/or school district staff who have received training in the processing and counting of absentee ballots, and/or trained as election judges. The clerk or the clerk's designee is hereby authorized and directed to appoint the members of the ballot board. The clerk or the clerk's designee shall establish, maintain, and update a roster of employees appointed to and currently serving on the ballot board, and shall report to the board from time to time as it is, as its status. Each member of the board shall be paid reasonable compensation for services rendered during an election at the same rate as other election judges. Provided, however, if a staff member is already being compensated for regular duties, additional compensation shall not be paid for ballot board duties performed during the staff member's duty day. The following individuals, each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge, are hereby appointed as judges of an election, to act as such of respect to polling places listed below. We have Dilworth Glenin and Felton.
We can fill those in afterwards.
Okay.
Which we will not know until closer to the election.
Okay.
And I know that Jeannie will be involved, Brooke will be involved, we have to have an overall election judge at each of the three.
Okay. The election judges shall act as clerks of election, count the ballots, cast, and submit the results to the school board for canvases, in the manner provided for other school district elections. The election must be canvassed between the third and the tenth day following the election. The school district clerk shall make all campaign financial reports required to be filed with the school district, under the Minnesota Statute, section two-eleven A point oh-two, available on the school district's website. The clerk must post the report on the school district's website as soon as possible, but no later than thirty days after the date of the receipt of the report. The school district must make a report available on the school district's website for four years from the date the report was posted to the website. The clerk must also provide the Campaign Finance and Public Disclosure Board with a link to the section of the website where reports are made available.
Ready for a motion? You sound like you got a lot of work to do.
Yeah, right.
Well, does this say we are having absentee ballots?
Yes.
Which we don't for other elections, right?
All right. Wow, good job. All right, looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. All those in favor say aye.
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 And opposed?
Can I ask questions, or do something?
Oh, yes, yes. I thought, I thought you already asked some questions, that's why, I apologize.
No, I guess it's just kind of reassuring, because once we vote on this, there's no turning back, so I just wanted to reiterate again, I was gonna ask all the admin team, which only half is here, to make sure that this plan solves all the issues we had in the past, and gives us all the rooms and everything else we need for the future. Specifically, the one question I know I had on Saturday too, was somebody was worried that there wasn't enough high school rooms being added, so, I just want anybody to say your comment, or whatever, so...
I think we've done a lot of work and revisions and talking, and, I mean, I feel very comfortable with, with this going, going forward, Ronnie.
I feel like we've done a lot of thinking and going through revisiting the plans over and over again, I feel comfortable with it.
Not that we know what's gonna be in what room, I mean, that's all still coming up, whatever, so... And you still feel this'll last us for many years, and that, that there is enough high school rooms? I know we've got the option to add rooms down there, down the road, but...
I, I think what, the reason I feel a lot more comfortable about the high school part, is because we know that the career academy is a go. I mean, let's, let's face it, we, no one knows what courses we may be offering in ten years. But, what we do know is that, that space at the other site is gonna allow us to do a lot of expansion, and from everything we're, we're seeing, and what the needs are, getting into those, the CTE and all those types, that's where we're gonna need expansion. And that career center's really going to open that up. And that Career Center's really going to open that up.
And once our referendum gets completed, if it gets passed, as will the Career Center, is gonna be right on track at the same time.
Correct.
Yeah.
Everything is, is set up to be Fall of Twenty-One, so...
And just what I've been telling everybody too, is, you know, you don't need the same rooms that we did when we went to school. Everything has changed, you know, a lot more special, had smaller rooms, all of this type of thing, but you need more of them. The only thing I foresee down the road is we're still gonna need some more parking at Glenon somewhere down the road.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. Well, I just want to say I appreciate Lee and Jason for being local and being here all the time for us, and along with all our crazy journeys and quick requests, and can we do this and couldn't we do that? I know we had some, when we, we voted for that, there was, you know, some discord and question, but I firmly stand behind both of your companies and what you guys have done for us so far, so I appreciate that.
Well, and those, those rooms that they're gonna give us for nothing just because...
Good luck with that, Raleigh.
Good guy.
Maybe they'll give you Jurassic Park half-price.
Hey, whatever.
All kinds of sponsorship options.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm good, I'm so...
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So this'll do a roll call. Raleigh?
Yes.
Amy? Myself, yes?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero. We will move on to ten point one, this is the certified contract. This is for Mackenzie Sorum. And where will she be at?
She will be at, this is at Dilworth Elementary.
Third grade.
Third grade.
Okay. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura.
Are you fully staffed? No.
And I just wanted to say that on the next school board agenda, there will be another pair of contract on that, because it, I didn't get her hired in time to be on this one, so when you guys see that, I don't want you to go, well, Mary Ann, it's for fully. We already said that, it'll be on the next one, like I'm starting to sweat.
Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. It is nine thirteen, or, oh, my gosh, seriously, this call has got to go. It's seven thirteen, we are going to be going into closed labor negotiations, and I need a roll call for that. Ronnie?
Do you need a motion to go into it?
Yep.
Do we have the key?
Oh, yep, you, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Lindsay, second.
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, it is seven fourteen.
So we are going into the boardroom, and we will return after that.
It is seven fifty-seven, and the regular school board meeting will be back in session. We were in closed session to discuss future contracts for our superintendent. And any thing else? Let's see. Eleven point one, we have a fiscal personnel meeting, which is at five o'clock on the twelfth, followed by the board meeting at six o'clock. Anything else to add?
Operations.
Operations? Well, it's fiscal's.
I know.
Do we need operations?
We're supposed to have operations tonight, we didn't.
Right, because it was only a week's...
There's some things that I think we had on, uh, sun pump stuff, little things like that, that we probably should...
Why don't I see if they've got, because we got some new plumbing, because maybe...
Could you do, could you do, follow? Or could you follow the board meeting? Because it'll be a short meeting on, at six.
I think there's just some things we need to get done.
After the meeting is due out here.
That's what I'm saying. Fiscal, fiscal will be at five, regular board meeting at six, operations following...
You gonna have any time to look at trailers, should we go look, or not?
Um, actually, I'm thinking about going tomorrow, but I need to talk to James to see what he's got, because there's no sense in killing twice as it... What I did ask him the last time I talked to him over at the baseball field when I was fixing the fence, was, is the width, does he have the width of the skid steer so we know what we have for wheel well distance?
They've always been eighty-two inches, and the wheel wells are eighty-three, but that makes it really, they're always...
Yeah, and I never had any issues. I had a one-eighty New Holland, and there was no problem getting up onto it, none.
I just don't know if a guy...
That much on both sides.
If a guy can get a snow blower and a bucket if you need to move it in the winter on a twenty-six.
So anyway, that sounds like something you guys, you know, afterwards, because that just does not...
Do we have any, I'll think on the road at Glenon or anything on that or not?
Well, we'll, right now, we're still on track to have Seventh Street open to get into our parking lot. But, and I told, and Tracy told them, that if we have an issue, that we're not gonna be able to get into the parking lot from Seventh, we've gotta have a meeting. Because if that's not ready, we've got a problem to start school, because we cannot